Right folks, we're gonna start with our public hearings and I apologize if my voice is almost back today. I'm getting through this. I'd like to open the public hearing with regards to the Community Development Block Grant Program and at this time I'll ask Tammy to read the notes of the public hearing.
Notice of public hearing, Community Development Block Grant Application. The public notice is given that the County of Greene will hold a public hearing on the summer eighteen, twenty twenty four at six fifteen P M. At the Greene County Legislative Chamber, four eleven Main Street, Castle North, containing views and citizens, public agencies and other departments on the Harrow Hill. And community development needs of the county and eligible community development block grant C D G activities. And to provide the public an opportunity to comment on the county's community development block grant funding. Provided by the New York State Office of Community Renewal, Project Number Four Seven Seven, ending five three zero, yes two three. Implementing a micro enterprise assistance program. A summary of C D G program accomplishments will be presented at the public hearing. The visibility is handicapped, successful. The county encourages public comment and participation for the identification of need within the community. To be supported with C D G funds. Written comments are invited and can be submitted by email at Tammy at Tammy at Greene County at my dot um. In the subject line of the hearing. Written comments about community renewal here and forth now on the sound seventeen minutes.
Thank you Tammy. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments from the public with regards to the Community Development Block Grant Program. And I would just ask that if you speak, do you state your name for the record? With that, we begin the hearing. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to the Community Development Block Grant Program? Do you have James who would like to say a few words? In fairness.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Good evening, County Legislative Members. I'm here to just provide some brief accomplishments of the existing member enterprise assistance program that was awarded to the county in two thousand twenty three, April two thousand twenty three, to be exact. The second public hearing is a required motion by the New York State Office of Community Renewal in order to officially close out. The existing program at the exhaustion of all the granted funds. So as you recall, back in April two thousand twenty three, we were awarded three hundred thousand dollars to implement our first micro enterprise assistance program. That total amount included three hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars in general, three hundred thousand dollars to go towards program activities with the remaining. To be fulfilled by the equity provided by the applicants. In total, two hundred and fifty five thousand dollars were successfully delivered and awarded to micro enterprises throughout the county. Thirty thousand dollars of that total was repatriated partly in fact, through county into the consultant that we've worked with for program delivery fees. While total fifteen thousand dollars was the same way repatriated back to the county for consultant or administrative fees. Total of twelve businesses were successfully awarded, many of which created full-time equivalent positions to fulfill the national requirement. As imposed by the Office of Community Renewal and I'm happy to say that those funds have been exhausted. And the program will expire in April of two thousand twenty five. So after those brief accomplishments, I'm happy to answer any questions by members of the public or our legislative members if there are any.
Okay. Here and then, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to the Community Development Block Grant Program? By good measure, is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to Community Development Block Program? Alright ladies and gentlemen, thank you for attending the public hearing. The hearing is closed. Backly into the second public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing with regards to providing for certain tax exemptions for persons sixty five years of age or over. With an income of thirty six thousand dollars or less pursuant to section four sixty seven of the real property tax law. And at this time, I'll ask Tammy to read the notice of public hearing.
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on the proposition of whether or not Greene County should adopt the resolution providing certain tax exemption. For persons sixty five years of age or over with an income of thirty six thousand dollars or less pursuant to section four sixty seven of the real property tax law. Notice is further given that signed scale fit into real property tax law, section four sixty seven, paragraph one V one. One V two and one V three previously adopted by the Greene County legislature shall remain in effect. Second public hearing will be held on Monday, the summer eighteen, twenty twenty four at six twenty P M. And the Greene County Office will report for exit from four eleven Main Street, Castle North, and will find all persons with disabilities, families, parents. Will be very concerned with the public.
Thank you Tammy. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments in the public with regards to providing certain tax exemptions for persons sixty five years of age or over. With an income of thirty six thousand dollars or less pursuant to section four sixty seven of the real property tax law. If there's anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to providing for certain tax exemptions for persons sixty five years of age or over. With an income of forty five thousand dollars or less pursuant to section four sixty seven of the real property tax law. I would just ask that you raise your hand to be recognized and when we stand, please state your name for the record and with that, we begin the hearing. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to providing for certain tax exemptions for persons sixty five years of age or over. With an income of thirty six thousand dollars or less pursuant to section four sixty seven of the real property tax law. Again, is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to providing for certain tax exemptions for persons sixty five years of age or over. With an income of thirty six thousand dollars or less pursuant to section four sixty seven of the real property tax law. Final call? Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regard? To providing for certain tax exemptions for persons sixty five years of age or over. With an income of thirty six thousand dollars or less pursuant to section four sixty seven of the real property tax law. When we're done, thank you for attending this public hearing. This hearing is now closed. We want some schedule for six twenty five. I've got another moment here. Hey, I'd like to open the public hearing with regards to the local law. Introductory number three of two thousand twenty four. Of local law amending local law number one of two thousand and four relating to exemptions for real property taxes of property owned by persons with disabilities and limited incomes. And at this time, I'll ask Tammy to read the notice of public hearing.
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that it has been moved as acted from the county legislature of the county's meeting on the eighteen day of November twenty twenty four. Local law introductory number three of twenty twenty four. The local law amending local law number one of two thousand and four relating to exemption from real property taxes on property owned by persons with disabilities and limited incomes. Be enacted by the county legislature of the County of Greene's House. Section one. The purpose of this local law, implement local law number one of two thousand and four by increasing the maximum income limit. From its current amount of thirty five thousand one hundred to thirty six thousand. Section two, this local law shall have impact immediately upon its final onset of term. Notice is further given that the county legislature of the county's meeting will have a public hearing on said local law on the eighteen day of December twenty twenty four at six point five P M. And the legislative meeting on fourth floor, nine blocks, though, four eleven Main Street, Castle North, and all persons with disabilities, families, parents.
Okay, thank you Tammy. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments from the public with regards to local law introductory number three of two thousand twenty four. Of local law amending local law number one of two thousand and four relating to exemption from real property taxes on property owned by persons with disabilities and limited incomes. If there's anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to local law introductory number three of two thousand twenty four, I would just ask that you raise your hand if you can be recognized. And when we stand, please state your name for the record and with that, we begin the hearing. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to local law introductory number three of two thousand twenty four? Of local law amending local law number one of two thousand and four relating to exemption from real property taxes on property owned by persons with disabilities and limited incomes. Again, is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to local law introductory number three of two thousand twenty four? Of local law amending local law number one of two thousand and four relating to exemption from real property taxes on property owned by persons with disabilities and limited incomes. I care about. And finally, again, is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to local law introductory number three of two thousand twenty four? Of local law amending local law number one of two thousand and four relating to exemption from real property taxes on property owned by persons with disabilities and limited incomes. We will close that public hearing. Thank you for attending. At this time, we will only see where we will leave the public. All regular meetings number twelve from year two thousand twenty four are ordered. Best be reminded from the right side of the room to stand in front of you. Where will the public be?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands to one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can move to the role, please. I have a proclamation. That's in honor of NICE Act, one hundred years of exemplary service and leadership. I will read this proclamation and I'll take this to all may and present this to them. Some for later in your future. From the Greene County Legislature, proclamation in honor of New York State Association of Counties' one hundred years of exemplary service and leadership. Whereas the New York State Association of Counties, NICE Act, was founded one hundred years ago to serve as a unified voice and advocate for fifty seven counties of New York State, including the five boroughs of New York City. And whereas NICE Act has consistently worked to enhance the effectiveness of our county governments. Through robust advocacy, comprehensive education, and meticulous research, all aimed at addressing the unique challenges faced by county officials and their constituents. And whereas over the past century, NICE Act has played an integral role in promoting the interests of county governments at the state and federal levels. Ensuring that the voices of local governments are heard and remains addressed. And whereas NICE Act has provided invaluable resources and training for county officials, empowering them with knowledge and tools necessary to deliver efficient and effective services for residents of New York State. And whereas through its commitment and need to research, NICE Act has fostered innovative solutions and best practices to strengthen county operations and improve quality life for millions of New Yorkers. And whereas, NICE Act has built a legacy of collaboration and partnership among county governments, fostering a spirit of unity and mutual support. And through building, to address common challenges and advancing shared goals. And whereas, the centennial anniversary of NICE Act is aligning at this occasion to celebrate the association's enduring dedication to public service. And its profound impact on governance and the all-knowing being of New York State's counties. Now therefore, we, the members of the Greene County Legislature, can hereby proclaim the year two thousand twenty five. As the centennial year of the New York State Association of Counties and extend heartfelt congratulations and gratitude to NICE Act. For one hundred years of exemplary service and leadership needed today from the Greene County Legislature and signed by the legislature. Hundred years. There are no objections or corrections from the middle to the previous meeting. I'll clear the room through. Have the property meeting correspondence in your packets. If they didn't with that. The motion in the second, to the defense of the committee reports.
Our dead.
Over. That would be the reason.
This is that local law number three of twenty twenty four. A local law amending local law number one of two thousand and four relating to exemption from real property taxes on property owned by persons with disabilities and limited incomes. I can motion?
Yes.
And may a sec. Over.
My man. More men. The role.
Let's see the panel. Aye. Let's say the whole lot.
Yeah.
Let's just say the left.
Aye.
Let's just say the left.
Yes.
Let's just say the roof.
Oh.
Let's just say the Loudera.
Yes.
Let's just say the Martin.
Yes.
Let's just say the overlot.
Yes.
Let's just say the horn.
Yes.
Let's just say the truth.
Aye.
Let's just say the humor.
Yes.
Let's just say the U.S.
Aye.
Let's just say the Davis.
Aye.
Turn around.
Aye.
So you're gonna pay five thousand dollars for my other country. It's number four point four dash two four. Organization paid planes of private state Martin, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. Very.
Resolution number four forty five dash twenty four. Organization paid planes payment of private state Loudera, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. That's very.
Resolution number four forty six dash twenty four. Increase amount of income for seniors that are impacted now. Of private state Martin, send my legislative over anyway.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. Very.
Resolution number four forty seven dash twenty four. Organization of all organization meeting for twenty twenty five. Of Chairman Hunter, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. That's very.
Resolution number four forty eight dash twenty four. Resolution supporting earned value seen by a court of grand authority. Of private state handle, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. That's very.
Resolution number four forty nine dash twenty four. Questioning the interim plan board to carry out certain local land use. Did you do that grant by New York State General Unit of Law or Department of Justice? Or private state Loudera, send my legislative over.
Second and all. All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. Very.
Resolution number four fifty three dash twenty four. Authorizing insurance coverage for twenty twenty five. All private state overwides, send my legislative over.
Favor.
Aye.
You're opposed.
Resolution number four fifty one dash twenty four. Authorizing agreement between Greene County and the Colorado Community Health Federation and all rising team. All private state over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. Very.
The rule is number four fifty two dash twenty four. Authorizing business services for various channels. Of private state Martin, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. Very.
Resolution number four fifty three dash twenty four. Organization advertised for days during high pressure air compression systems emergency services. Of private state handle, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. Very.
Resolution number four fifty four dash twenty four. Organization advertised for days for vital system and human health patients during emergency. Of private state Dana, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. Very.
Resolution number four fifty five dash twenty four. Authorizing purchase of one new thirty one foot full power light. All private state Martinez, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed.
Oppose.
Proposition George. That's very.
Resolution number four fifty six dash twenty four. Authorizing agreement with Greene County Agriculture. On private state two, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. Very.
Resolution number four fifty seven dash twenty four. Authorizing agreement between the National Greene County and private state Loudera, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
Second. Second from Lennon. You're opposed. Very.
Resolution number four fifty eight dash twenty four. Authorizing agreement with my own project extension Association of Company Greene County. Of private state two, send my legislative over.
Second and all.
Over.
Second and Lennon. All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. Very.
Resolution number four fifty nine dash twenty four. Authorizing the doing create pass on the earth. Or private state two, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. Very.
Resolution number four sixty eight dash twenty four. Authorizing Greene County local funds pipeline. Walked by Chairman Hunter, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. Very.
Resolution number four sixty one dash twenty four. Authorizing with Greene, Greene County Federation of Sportsmen. All private state Loudera, send my legislative over.
Second.
Over.
Over. Lennon. Lennon. All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed.
Resolution number four sixty two dash twenty four. Authorizing agreement with Georgia State. Or private state two, send my legislative over.
Very. All favor. All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. Very.
Resolution number four sixty three dash twenty four. Authorizing agreement with Greene County Water Facility. Of Chairman Hunter, send my legislative over.
Over. All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. Very.
Resolution number four sixty four dash twenty four. Authorizing agreement soil and water conservation. Of private state Hunter, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. That's very.
Resolution number four sixty five dash twenty four. Authorizing agreement soil and water conservation, the U.S. Dividing Watershed Assistance Program. Or private state two, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. Very.
Resolution number four sixty six dash twenty four. Accepting proposal for engineering services necessary for new maintenance building and scale house replacement at Castle. Or private state Jewish, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed.
Resolution number four sixty seven dash twenty four. Accepting proposal for engineering services for the building. And to former orders, Harry, pretty, 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 C I M, C O two dash zero five, there's seven private office, P O D, town of Castle. Or private state over, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed.
Resolution number four sixty eight dash twenty four. Authorizing county highway and solid road improvement to pump P P L as consultant for M P N design services. For the replacement of a Sabre Valley Road Bridge over ten mile three. Then three, two zero zero eight four zero, pound down, and one seven six three point zero seven. Or private state handle, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. That's very.
Resolution number four sixty nine dash twenty four. Authorizing the highway department and putting in brand with C D S, met, and engineering services necessary for the investigation of interference. Who spoke the long time with sixty one, third of the other being Charlie Gold. Or private state Hunter, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye. You're opposed. I got a second from over. That's very.
Resolution number four seventy dash twenty four. Authorizing agreement with Green County Human Services Agent and Town Bureau. All private state handle, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed.
Resolution number four seventy one dash twenty four. Authorizing agreement with Greene County Department Human Services and Delaware. Or private state right, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. That's very.
Resolution number four twenty four. Five hundred million, one nine, department one service, eight, visiting, public, all this other day. Send my channel.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. Very.
Resolution number four seventy three dash twenty four. Authorizing the room and green time department human services agent and honor and caring. All private state handle, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. Very.
Resolution number four seventy four dash twenty four. Authorizing agreement with the Green Time Department Human Services Agent and visiting that is home. All private state true, send my legislative over.
All favor.
Aye.
You're opposed. That's very.
Resolution number four seventy five dash twenty four. Authorizing the L U, the Green Time Department Human Services and the Department of Non-Development, Floyd, Will, Phil. For transportation services provided by the Green County Department. All private state Loudera, send my legislative handle and over. All private state Rivera, send my legislative handle and over.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number four seventy-six dash twenty-four, authorizing. Mental health association of common. And in these programs. Or private state Davis, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number four seventy-seven dash twenty-four, authorizing contract. Community services board on county recovery services. On private state Davis, send my legislative handle and true.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number four seventy-eight dash twenty-four, authorizing agreement. Battle director, in time. Hamilton, of private state Davis, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number four seventy-nine dash twenty-four, proven movement to provide contract physical qualification program. Of private state handle, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed?
Resolution number four eighty-eight dash twenty-four, authorizing. Entire call of the valley and panel university. Of private state rumor, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number four eighty-one dash twenty-four, authorizing. In Green County Public Health Department and Joshua Roman Field. Or private state Davis, send my legislative.
Second. For work. Part that also.
And part that.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number four eighty-two dash twenty-four, authorizing. In Green County Public Health Department of the West End. Of private state Lucas, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number four eighty-three dash twenty-four, authorizing agreement. Green County Public Health Department and the West End company. Jack fun allocation. Of private state rumor, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Very.
Resolution number forty-four dash twenty-four, authorizing. Alpaca planet to down. Our end in time. Of private state Davis, send my chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? That's carried.
Number four twenty-four, point member. Water crossing. Of private state. Send my legislative.
Second.
Part that.
And part that. Lennon. All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? That's carrying. One of us. That's carrying. Thank you, Mr. Boomer.
Thank you.
Resolution number four eighty-six dash twenty-four, on the member community service report. Of private state handle, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed?
Resolution number four eighty-seven dash twenty-four, pointing election commission of Green County. Deborah Coleman. Or private state right, send my legislative Lennon and true.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number four eighty-eight dash twenty-four, point members to the Green County. Of private state Thornton, send my legislative Martin.
Second from Lennon. All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number four eighty-nine dash twenty-four, point members to the Green County. Of private state rumor, send my legislative handle, through a chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number four ninety dash twenty-four, point number. In my health department. That's all right. Of private state Rivera, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed?
Resolution number four ninety-one dash twenty-four, reappointing director capital to O T B. Of private state one, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed?
Number four ninety-two dash twenty-four, reappointing. Or private state of life, send my legislative Davis, over Lennon, Lucas, Rivera, Martinez, over. Chairman.
Society. True. Thornton. For which? All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Move that around. Move it. Move this. Very. Thank you. Very.
Number four ninety-three dash twenty-four, reappointing member in county board effects. Of private state hold on, send my legislative Martinez and chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed?
Resolution number one, what? Reappointing county. Of private state one, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed?
Stay.
Attention. For that is. That was carried.
Number four ninety-five dash twenty-four, reappointing public. Of private state handle, send my legislative.
Second.
Over.
For work. All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number four ninety-six dot com. Reappointing member for director of the total conference. Of private state Rivera, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed?
Resolution number four ninety-seven dash twenty-four, reappointing member for director of the total conference. Legislature draft and legislative. Of private state Rivera, send my legislative. And over.
Lennon. All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Yes, yeah.
Number four ninety-eight dash twenty-four, reappointing member. Stop W Y. Of private state Rivera. Send my legislative rumor, Davis, handle and partners, Thornton and chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Thank you. Very.
Number four ninety-nine dash twenty-four, authorizing charge back election. Services and materials. Of private state over, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in.
Resolution number five hundred dash twenty-four, authorizing going to order sewer inside what part of the edge. Several. Or private state Martinez, send my legislative.
Roll call please.
Let's say the whole one.
Yeah.
Let's just say the left.
Aye.
Let's just say the line.
Yes.
Let's say. Let's say the.
Yes.
Let's just say the Martinez.
Yes.
Let's just say the.
Yes.
Let's just say the.
Yes.
Let's just say the two.
Aye.
Let's just say the rumor.
Yes.
Let's just say the.
Aye.
Let's just say the Davis.
Aye.
Let's just say the handle.
Aye.
Chairman.
Aye.
Mister chairman, we have ten thousand I zero O M zero.
That's carried.
Number five hundred one dash twenty-four, authorizing clause incurred under varnish brothers. Breakfast vocal on the editor's set call from town Carol. Of private state Lennon, send my legislative.
Hey, all. That was second true. All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Very.
Dash twenty-four, authorizing clause incurred on the unsafe building while the edge was set for all town. So. All private state Martinez, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number five spell three dash twenty-four, authorizing. The. Of private state left, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number five zero four is twenty-four, town ladies. Of private state over, send my legislative.
Roll call please.
Let's say the left.
Aye.
Let's just say the left.
Yes.
Let's just say the.
Aye.
Let's just say the Rivera.
Yes.
Let's just say the Martinez.
Yes.
Let's just say the over.
Yes.
Let's just say the.
Yes.
Let's just say the true.
Aye.
Let's just say the rumor.
Yes.
Let's just say the.
Aye.
Let's just say the Davis.
Aye.
Let's just say the handle.
Aye.
Let's just say the hold on.
Yes.
Chairman.
Aye.
Chairman, we have ten thousand eyes. You're all.
Very.
Resolution number five zero five dash twenty-four, authorizing. You have your own piece for passes for the year twenty twenty-four. Offered by state Martinez, send my legislative.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Oh, sorry.
Let's say the.
Yes.
Let's just say the.
Aye.
Let's just say the Rivera.
Yes.
Let's just say the Martinez.
Yes.
Let's just say the.
Yes.
Let's just say the.
Yes.
Let's just say the true.
Aye.
Let's just say the rumor.
Yes.
Let's just say the.
Aye.
Let's say the Davis.
Aye.
Let's just say the handle.
Aye.
Let's just say the hold on.
Yes.
Let's just say the.
Aye.
Chairman.
Aye.
Mister chairman, we have ten thousand I zero O M zero.
Oh, there we go.
Number five zero four slash twenty-four, authorizing. We love you on safe doors practice for the year twenty twenty-four. Of private state Martinez. Let's say the.
Aye.
Let's say the Rivera.
Yes.
Let's just say the Martinez.
Yes.
Let's say the.
Yes.
Let's say the.
Yes.
Let's just say the two.
Aye.
Let's say the rumor.
Yes.
Let's just say the.
Aye.
Let's say the Davis.
Aye.
Let's say the handle.
Aye.
Let's say the hold on.
Yes.
Let's just say the.
Aye.
Let's say the.
Yes.
Chairman.
Aye.
Mister chairman, we have ten thousand I zero O M zero.
That's carried.
Resolution number five zero seven dash twenty-four, amending resolution number one three seven dash two four. Establishing C P number one point seven capital transportation. That's. Of private state like, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Very.
Resolution number five zero eight dash twenty-four, amend capital project number one point seven capital transportation. Best. Of private state Rivera, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number five. Down nine dash twenty-four, authorizing purchase and amending capital project number one five one. You care about. Of private state Lennon, send my legislative over anyway.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? That's carried.
Ten years twenty-four, establishing capital project number one three. Twenty twenty-four, awareness management performance. Of private state handle, send my legislative. And chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Very.
Resolution number five eleven dash twenty-four, as amended, establish capital project number one six four. California. Of private state Lennon, send my legislative handle, two and chairman.
I like to second. Leg. All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed?
Opposed.
You opposed? Very.
Resolution number five spell dash twenty-four, establishing capital project number one fifty-two. For purposes of school. In relation to. Of private state Rivera, send my.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Very.
Resolution number five thirteen dash twenty-four, authorizing. Warrior of record payment, appointing director of workforce department and level. Of private legislative handle, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? That's carried.
Resolution number five fourteen dash twenty-four, budget amendment and authorizing purchase of one new celebrate. In sex events. Offered by legislative rumor, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Very.
Resolution number five eighteen dash twenty-four, budget amendment and strength recovery. In Asia, of private state Thornton, send my legislative.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? This role. Appointing here. Appointing members. Advisory Advisory Council for Green County Department for Aging two thousand twenty-five. Being duly appointed as chairman of the Green County Legislature, I do hereby reappoint. Upon recommendation of Amanda Lyons, executive director of the Green County Department of Human Services Aging. Following as members of the Advisory Council. For the County Department for Aging for two thousand twenty-five. Luther Golden, Luther Deadhappen, Warren's Ole. Ernest Armstead, Edward Boomer. To Miss LaPresty, Luda Anderson, Dorothy Tru, Charlene Maydi. Molly Whitbeck, Lauren Wallen, and Craig Tyler Lynch. Appointing member to the Agricultural and Farmland Protection Board. I Patrick Slinger, chairman of the Green County Legislature by authority vested in me by resolution two three six. Through our sign three. I'm Patrick S. Linger, chairman of the Green County Legislature by authority vested in by resolution two three six, or nine three. Who hereby reappoint to the following. Members to the Green County Agricultural and Farmland Protection Board, Michael Ulich. From Green County Legislature, commencing January fourth, two thousand twenty-five, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. And as chairman. Stop W Y coordinator. As chairman of Green County Legislature by authority vested in by statute of the state of New York, I hereby reappoint the Green County tariff. Peter Kuzbinski, as Green County Stop W Y coordinator for term of one year commenced from January first, two thousand twenty-five through December thirty-first. And reappointing and reappointing members to the Green County Youth Advisory Board for two thousand twenty-five. Being duly authorized as chairman of the Green County Legislature, I do hereby appoint or reappoint upon the recommendation of Amanda Lyons, executive director of Green County Department of Human Services Youth Bureau. Following as member of Green County Youth Advisory Board for two thousand twenty-five. Margaret Porch, Randy Callahan. Natalie Lipsky. Betsy Calipari. Kevin Forbes, Holiday, Julie Jager, Amanda Karch. David Kingman, Nate Lampin, Nathan Lampin, Sal Musa Alasa. Um, Mariano Rustic, Rustic. Andrew Scutura, Donna Mary Ann Scolera. Having the board in recognition of our government. We play tonight. Maybe I'll find. Item of business, we have a couple of. Our. Farmers in crime who are leaving us at the end of this meeting, the end of this year. For greater characters.
That's where.
I will get Mr. Boomer. Up first, please. For over.
That will be the final outing.
Hey. Thank you, sir.
It's been a pleasure.
It has been nice. We appreciate your, uh, the efforts that you put in for the county, your constituents, and town actions. Um, great job. Appreciate your, your friendship. On your posts, on the struggles that you went through to make some of them. Um, we got a commendation from. What on your board? In honor of you, whereas Edward Boomer has continuously served on the Green County Legislature for the past six years, since January of two thousand nineteen, representing district number three of Athens. And whereas over the years, Edward Boomer has served as a member of numerous legislative committees, including county services, economic development, tourism, health services, and public safety. And whereas during his time with us, Edward Boomer was appointed to serve on the advisory council of the Green County Department for Aging and Green County Emergency Medical Systems Board of Directors. And whereas Edward Boomer will be leading the Green County Legislature as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And whereas it is our desire to express our sentiments regarding the departure of our colleague. Now therefore, we, the members of the Green County Legislature, do hereby express our collective admiration, appreciation, and affection for our colleague Edward Boomer. And wish him the best in all of his future endeavors. We also take this opportunity to call upon the citizens of Green County to join with us in commending and thanking Edward Boomer for his six years of devoted public service. To and on behalf of his community and Green County. Thank you, sir, and it's signed by the.
I, uh, I'm, I'm. I didn't get a politician speechless. So, uh, but I'm not a politician anymore. I'm retiring from politics. Good. This has been truly, and I've said this before, you may have all heard it, this has been the honor and privilege of my life. And I have enjoyed every single second of it, even some of the contentious moments, we both go to jail, we did a lot of good work. The county is in the best condition it has ever been in, it is, uh, the second upgrading from Moody's. Uh, that's everyone in this room. No, everyone in this room has, 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 has went back. Um. I'm very proud of this, I'm very proud of each and every one of you, and, uh. I will miss both of you. Thank you. And you will have a friend in me, that's for sure. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, same thing, you know, we, we have done such good work.
Yes, we have.
In my time that I spent with you, I know it hasn't been your whole, your whole time, I know we had a couple of years there, and a lot got done, some, um, some in Florida. Helped that, but, um, overall. Very good, very good tenure, a lot of good accomplishments, and, uh, want to thank you for standing by us and sticking through thick and thin and getting the good stuff done that we got done, thank you. Linda Farden, from the Green County Legislature, in your honor, whereas Linda H. Overbaugh has continuously sued, served on the Green County Legislature for twelve years. Since January of two thousand thirteen, representing district number one Catskill. And whereas over the years, Linda H. Overbaugh has served as a member of numerous legislative committees, including county resources, county services, economic development, tourism, finance, government operations, and health services. Whereas during her time with us, Linda H. Overbaugh was appointed to serve on many boards, committees, and task forces, including administrative policy and task force, manual and policy task force. The chair of the county determining search committee, the S S policy and benefits review committee. Uh, board of directors of the Green County Economic Development Corporation, formerly the Quantum Fund Committee, G I S coordinating body. And jail special, special jail task force programming committee and administrative committee. And whereas Linda H. Overbaugh will be leading the Green County Legislature as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And whereas it is our desire to express our sentiments regarding the departure of our colleague. Now therefore, we, the members of the Green County Legislature, do hereby express our collective admiration, appreciation, and affection for our colleague Linda H. Overbaugh, and we wish her all the best in future endeavors. We also take, take this opportunity to call upon the citizens of Green County to join with us in commending and thanking Linda H. Overbaugh for her twelve years of devoted public service to and on behalf of her community and Green County. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you. Yeah. Same one, as Boomer's already said, it's been a pleasure of my life to serve on this legislature for the last twelve years. I'm gonna miss every single one of you. It was a lot of good work, a lot of conversations, but we all got through it, we're all friends. Keep up the good work, guys. I'm gonna be checking on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Question for county person. Do we have to go to Albany now and be licensed lobbyists so we can come back down here and hooray?
Yes.
Yeah.
Two years. All right, if anybody has any speedbird grants in this month, check will be, check will be there on Friday after two P M. Uh, and please remember, our organizational meeting is scheduled for January seventh. At six P M, here in this room. For everybody who's sworn in, so please don't miss that one. I do have a request for executive session tonight, and we'll be having further business.
First and second.
Okay, so I'm using a motion for the exact session, sir. We have an negation sign. Hold on, hold on, hold on, and let it. All favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And for the next session, we will adjourn this meeting, and please be following that.